Approval agenda, is there motion to approve the agenda? Renee, a second. Lynn? So Renee moved and discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, no disclosures of conflict, so we'll get right to resident speak out. And all I wanted to say is I hope you were able to read our press release that, you know, and, oh yeah, Dick reminded me, we do have limits. Dick is the official timekeeper. Three minutes for individual, five minutes for group. So Janet, if I could-
Andy, perhaps it would be a good idea for you to read the press release before people make their comments, in case they haven't.
Has everyone seen a copy of our press release?
No.
Oh, okay.
The press release is here, can you pass out?
Yes. Yeah, we have some hard copies, Alan, it's a whole lot better than me trying to read it.
I just want to make sure people have it in mind before they make comments-
I can read the headline, which basically says Columbia Association postpones decision to pursue recognition as a community benefit association, and we will certainly talk about that tonight. Okay. Okay, so first up on our resident speak out, Jay Bosling Stingel, I will apologize, I'm not that great with names, but welcome Jay, and please, as I said, if you could speak into the mic, because sometimes people in the back, and even here at the board, can't hear people.
Of course.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Bonstingle, I live in Wild Lake. And when I came here, I didn't know that there had been a postponement of the issue. Perhaps others in back of me are in similar situation. I'll make it very brief. I applaud you for postponing. And I hope that the additional time that this affords you to consider the situation will be used to rethink the way in which CA is going to posture itself here. I have lived here since 1974, and I've invested all of those years, as I know many of you have, many of the people in back of me have, I've invested all of those years in paying taxes here, paying CA dues, investing my time at Oakland Mills High School as a social studies teacher for a dozen years, and investing my time and energy in community development as well. I am not a fan of the proposed approach, and I want to say one more time, thank you for postponing. Hopefully, it will afford us more time to take a look at it and its ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions? Jill Crane, welcome Jill.
Thank you.
And, yeah, if you could once again make sure you sit in front of the mic.
Thank you very much. I agree, I am very gratified that you've decided to defer pursuing this until everyone has had more of a chance to look at the proposal, its details, and consider the ramifications. My concerns are primarily as a homeowner, and I've been a homeowner, I was a homeowner in Harper's Choice for 14 years, and now in Oakland Mills for over 12 years, to understand what the concept of expanding coverage beyond existing property owners really means. We, the presenters last night assured us that there would be no effect on property owners, yet expanding the universe to include a larger, a larger class of people, by definition, kind of reduces the share, or the percentage, that property owners represent in the total. And I'd like to have more of an opportunity to think about what that means in the long run. The other thing that struck me is that you were talking about the relieving CA of some of the obligations to challenge Maryland legislation for homeowners' associations that might not apply to Columbia. And I'm not sure that, in the long run, the waterfall effects on property owners, on village boards, on smaller homeowners' associations, who would have to decide how to pick up the slack, so to speak, if CA doesn't continue to do that, what burdens would that place on local, local boards? And what effect would it have on Columbia as a whole if various boards decide to pursue very different roles? You know, does that, I'm not sure that enhances the idea that we are Columbia. So those are things that I really want to look at. I look forward to having time to read the bill in detail, to think about those questions, and ask more questions as they come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill. Any question? Next up, we have Carla Tavolo. Welcome, Carla.
My name is Carla Tavolo, and I would like to thank you for deciding to postpone this decision, and I hope that in the future, you use a more transparent process. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Carla. Next up, we have Tom Wing. Welcome, Tom.
I just want to briefly echo the sentiments that have already been expressed. I'm glad that you wisely decided to postpone the decision, and I hope you'll continue to be transparent and keep us informed.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome in.
I'm Ann Wing, I live in Owen Brown, and I'm very glad that you decided to postpone it. I think that we need more time for everybody to sort of digest what you propose, and I think that if you, in the future, let us know a little bit before, give us longer head time, we'd have a chance to look at it and study it. So thank you very much for postponing it, and I appreciate it, and just let us know a little bit more ahead of time.
Oh, we will communicate.
Okay.
Thank you, Ann. Next up, Fulton Fulton, welcome.
Hello, my name is Fulton Fulton, and I'm relatively new here, so I've been here five years, and I echo what my fellow Colombians said before me, but I find it very difficult and you to understand, we as a cul-de-sac work together to try to inform each other, some of us have been on the local boards, community boards. We were all completely confused, many of us have been there for over 30 years, nobody was able to understand what this was about, what it was for, and the reason behind it. So something, with respect, some ball was dropped somewhere. Thank you very much for postponing us the vote today, but please, inform us better. I've got old heads around me who've worked with you guys for a long time, and they are clueless as well. We have discussed it ad nauseam via email in the last two days. It was an emergency, and we shouldn't be creating emergencies here.
Thank you. Jenny?
I was just wondering if everybody, if you want, could give what village they live in? You don't have to.
Longfellow.
Thank you.
Longfellow.
Harper's Choice.
Before we get to the next one, there seems to be some feedback on the cell phones, so Alan or Janet could put it on mute? Thank you.
I'm on the phone as well, I'll put mine on-
I'm on mute.
Oh, Nancy.
I'm on mute.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nancy, I'm sorry, I'll put mine on mute now.
Okay, next up, we have Barbara Wright. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Wright, I live in Wild Lake Village, I've been in Columbia since 1969, and most of the things that Columbia Association has done, I've been very happy with. Over the years, there are some things that we have some disagreements about. I've been an elected member of the Wild Lake Village Board, and I'm just saying, I was very disappointed in the meeting last night because of the rush of this issue. I know I'm not fully informed about it, and I'm very, very happy, and I congratulate you for taking a little bit more time with this. I think the community really, really needs, from everything I've heard, more time to analyze it. And I'd like to see personally, an independent analysis on both sides of this issue, some, you know, where we could really have some trust in the results, and, you know, just have some kind of independent analysis. I think that would be very, very helpful to residents. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your, yes, sir.
Great.
By independent analysis, you mean hiring some type of outside counsel, or is that what you're-
I don't know if it would be counsel, I think it would be the most appropriate, but it is a law that we're talking about, so I guess it would have to be somebody outside counsel.
Has your, has your village board talked about that possibility?
No, no, I haven't, I'm not on the village board right now.
Okay.
I have been in the past, but I'm not right now. So, and I am concerned about the effect and the impact on the village boards, too. I don't know, I, that idea just came up in conversation with, with some other residents, so.
Understood, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next up, we have Truce Thomas. Welcome, Truce.
Thank you. I echo many of the sentiments already expressed about the wisdom in postponing the vote. I would like to encourage, obviously, greater communication and transparency, much more early in the process, so we can all be much more clear about what exactly is going on. All right, that's it, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
And I live in Owen Brown.
Yep. A great village, let me tell you, Owen Brown.
Oh, wait a minute.
I didn't say it was the only.
Oh, okay, okay.
I said it was a great village. Next up, Sarah-
Blake.
Alan, Blake?
Blake.
Blake. Welcome, Sarah.
Thanks.
Dick, why don't you read the names? Why don't you read the names?
Should I piece this way?
Speak into the mic. Yes, speak into the mic, please, if you-
First of all, I'd like to thank you for postponing the vote tonight. It was a shock to me when I received Liz Bobo's email last Sunday morning, informing me this change was being proposed with such short notice, six days between the initial public disclosure last Thursday and the vote that was supposed to be tonight. I created, when I got her email, I created a petition on moveon.org and change.org to try to get more time to read the full text of what this change would entail. I got seven signatures on moveon.org and four signatures on change.org, and I also posted it on Facebook. I grew up in King's Contrivance, and I hope to move back soon. In 2007 to 2009, I was a Ralph scholar, and I learned a lot about Ralph Scholar's vision and what makes Columbia so special. And now, 10 years later, as I prepare to enter law school this fall, with a background in paralegal studies and experience working in a legal environment, I'm perplexed by the sudden push to Annapolis, and it raises questions in my mind, why the lack of transparency? Why the six-day turnaround time? I called the Maryland State Law Library to ask a legal librarian about the March 4th deadline. They informed me that it was true. I'm concerned about the amount of real estate development in downtown Columbia, and I'm concerned about whether this change would put business interests above, interests of community members. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator. Next up, I have Joel Horowitz, welcome, Joel.
Hello, Joel Horowitz, Harper's Choice. I support that you've postponed this, but why did the banner disappear? Because had I been on Facebook, I wouldn't have noticed that, or know where the postponement is actually buried on the website, because you seem to have no major announcement. I support, as Nina Basu posted on the Columbia Facebook page, that you might need another bucket rather than the HOA Act. I also support all the arguments made in the District 12 delegation letter, as I shared with you on some multiple emails today. One of the things I recognize is that, other than CA and the 10 villages, there's also Leisure Old Montgomery Village, Dolce and Pines, and probably some others in the state that have similar characteristics of being community-wide HOAs. And my proposal would be called a Planned Community Association, the Planned Community Act, and the letter from Harper's Choice allow all those organizations to opt in if they so choose. I gave you a link to my blog, where I spent all night, Saturday night, writing about some of these issues. I pointed out how I don't understand how this would solve the lobbying issue, because by incorporating numbers by reference, you still were going to have the problem, because Section 106.2 is actually being amended in a couple of bills pending now, and the reference to 106.2 would be actually be 106.4, and the 106.2 is a new provision. So you'd have to keep track of all those things if you're not going to have a separate law. And it belongs in the Real Estate Property Code, not the Corporation Act, and I know how Sheri and the management apparently liked you to be a corporation, apparently you're using that as an opportunity. Also, I couldn't comprehend how Section 1113.4 doesn't have any comment about it, and only applies to Columbia Association, and you left it in the HOA Act, rather than move it for the bill that you were creating. That is, the tax, the assessment cap legislation. But it puzzles me how that could not have any comment, when some of the other multiple provisions only apply to CA or in there. But more importantly, the fact that you kept saying this is a secret, when this, now that we find out that for the last five or six weeks, the signed properties bankruptcy case was decided, which is available on Google, the blogger from Baltimore wrote about it on Valentine's Day. It is not a secret, it's not a secret to talk about it, not a secret to know about it. What Sheri Wetton tells you, her opinion, is, might be privileged, but this is not a secret. And the fact that only today that you put on your press release that's a court case is really what's, what's wrong. And also, I'm saying you didn't understand the General Assembly rules, and that, but the point is, how is the CBA going to deal with, with the lien issue? I don't know how it can be fixed. The court talks about how there's constitutional issues involved, so even if you did these things, I don't understand how you, it would be, work. The court points out multiple errors in the CA's positions. I don't understand how they wrote on the Court of Special Appeals case that was expired. And lastly, you say that nothing would change, but if I understand it correctly, you would get a lien priority, which would be perfected above everybody else, so nobody would be able to get a mortgage, and how that would affect FHA and VA loans, if, if the position you seem to be taking in this court case would actually have CA priority to anybody's mortgage.
Thank you, Joel. Joel's the last name I had on my list, so please, hi Cindy. Sure, come on. Oh, okay, sure. Please give us your names, and village. Oh, good.
Cynthia Coyle, Harper's Choice. Hello, Greg. Okay, so I am glad Joel was up ahead of me, because once I knew that there was something that was identified in the detrimental financial effects, I went to the legal sites as well, and I pulled up the information related to that, that legal situation that Joel mentions about the lien. And what I'm concerned about is, I understand that this is being delayed, but I want to make sure that with this delay, people are really cautious, because this situation sounds like what you've done is you are generating and developing an idea or plan, so that you can garner the money from the, the corporations or the companies that have left. But at the end of the day, whatever you do with them, under CBA, you're going to be doing to us. And I think that we need to be very clear that what you said last night was that this is going to be a mirror image. If it truly is a mirror image, then I want, I think you have to disclose, when you're getting ready to send this back to us, for the community to look at it, is that every element has to be explained, because there's a lot of those little notes in there, is this is added, this is deleted, this is added, this is deleted, and that's not very helpful. So with that being said, I really appreciate that you are putting this on hold, and I would say that once something hits a website, and you are completely, it's, it's a public statement, that essentially this was a bankruptcy court situation, and one of our, one of our organizations was in default of their actual loan, CA was not found in favor for that, and that's public knowledge. And what you've done to yourselves is you've made yourselves look bad in the eyes of the public, because you communicated that this was so intensively secret, we were all basically thinking that somebody had stolen something. I mean, it's, this is far less serious than what you actually generated and created for the public. So please, do your best to give us the information, make it very clear to us what it is that you're actually adding, subtracting, and deleting, and if you're going to call us a CBA, let us know why it's going to be a CBA versus a homeowners' association, so.
Thank you for your feedback, Nadia. Okay, next up, Diane Beal. Welcome, Diane.
I'm glad to hear that you postponed it, but I'd like you to table it forever. We already had this discussion back in 2012 and 13. We don't need to hear it again, you don't need to waste our dollars for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next up, we have Yale Stenziger. Welcome, Yale.
Good evening, I'm Yale Stenziger. Right now, I'm a resident in Wild Lake. I moved here in 1972 with my wife, both our sons were born here. We've lived in Wild Lake, we lived in Harper's Choice, and now we're back to Wild Lake again. I guess I would like to ask you to, as you reconsider this matter, explain to us a few things. One, a little more information about the case that was decided in January. I'm surprised and really upset that you weren't able to talk about that last night. Obviously, you're able to talk about that today, and that would have been very helpful to let us know why this is happening. I think we need some backup data to tell us, how many liens have you been involved in in the past, maybe since the downturn in the economy in 2008? Have you been able to collect on those liens? What was the impact of this case in terms of what we've been left to collect, and what's the potential financial exposure we have? The other thing is, as I read over the court case and their decision, I looked at what you have now in the proposed bill in 5v6v02c, you have, it says here that you will still be, have a priority, but you provide that the declaration, or any other procedures provided or committed by state statute. So if there are limitations that still limit us to having to follow lien and take second or third or fourth position, I don't know how Section C puts us in that position to get that money.
Thank you.
So thank you for postponing this, and hopefully you'll have more time to look at this, maybe in the fall, so if there is a piece of legislation, if it's prefiled to be able to then be addressed by both houses of the General Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you, Yale. Yale? Thank you, Jen. Evelyn Asusa? Welcome.
I am also from Harper's Choice, and I am here because I am very perturbed about how this came about. I think that if we, as residents, get our bills in the mail, we could have gotten a notification in the mail as well, that this was happening, because for getting our money, it's easy to have something mailed to our houses. A postcard would have done. So I would appreciate if in the future, there's a communications plan, because otherwise, it looks like people are behind closed doors, plotting, and not really taking into consideration our interests. In addition to that, I am a government worker, so I understand bureaucracy. So when we do something that we need to tell the public about, we have what we call a communications plan. And there's a lot of ways to get to the people. You can do things via email, you can do them via post, post service, there are so many ways. And for me to find out their hand and not know what this means, it really raises all kinds of questions. So I'm not saying that this is a good or a bad thing, I'm just saying, this was not well done, in terms of communicating with any of us.
Well, I mean, thank you for your, your idea, too. Thank you. That's all I have on, sign up, anybody else? Sure, welcome, welcome. Just please give us your name and village.
My name is Liz Showan. I live in Wild Lake. I was at the meeting last night, and I must say that I was appalled at how CA conducted itself. CA presented itself as, that this was a matter of confidentiality and urgency, and it turns out that was not so. So I guess that was a smokescreen for something else. And it presented, the issue was the lien, that the matter of the lien is that much more important than changing the organization to a CBA, without giving us adequate time to understand it. The way that bill was written is appalling. It refers to, as someone else said, things that will be included and things that will not be included, without spelling it out. You need to write a bill that's intelligible, and that describes everything completely. Then you need to give us time, you have to reach out to everyone in this community who pays the money that supports your private corporation and your secret meetings. Everyone time to understand it, to ask questions about it, and to understand what the changes are going to mean. There's someone in my neighborhood, which is Hollow Oaks, who works with homeowners' associations, and he said these CBAs are not in the best interests of the residents that belong to them, because they will, I left my notes home, I didn't think I was going to get to speak, because they will limit our protections and our rights. He said it more detail, in a more detailed and eloquent way than I can remember. So I think it is really, really important that you have a process about that, that lets us to, leads us to engage.
You can also emails, email us, you know, when you get back to your notes.
Thank you.
If you would.
Okay.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, if not, I want to definitely thank everyone for coming out and for doing resident speak out, and going to go on. Discussion, Dick.
Well, I agree with what we've heard from constituents, and this thing was very, very badly handled. badly handled.
Dick, you need to talk into...
I agree that this thing was very, very badly handled. I think the entire board agrees with that. And however, there are some good things in the bill, and I think that we need to look at the two things separately. We have missed this legislative session. I think that's good, because it'll give us time to consult with the villages and with the people.
I had gone.
To really think about this situation and come up with something we can all support and do it in an open forum. I would like to make a motion. My motion is to, that the CA consult with the villages and the rest of the Columbia community to review the CBA bill and prepare a bill that can be filed with the Maryland Assembly in 2020, a bill that's, that can receive the support and approval of the overall community.
Can I make a friendly motion, or friendly amendment to that?
Well, this is something we want to talk about with you all. And if the community agrees that we don't need this, that would be a decision we can accept.
I'll second it.
Yes, yeah, sure. Just give me a chance here to write it. Consult with the villages and the rest of the Columbia community to review the CBA bill and prepare a bill that meets the approval of the overall community.
And I'll second that. This is Nancy.
I will. Could I, could I, could I offer a friendly amendment? Basically, what I'm trying to get at here, so we can change the wording later, but the concept is basically that we require staff, request staff, to come up with a plan by in April, so that this board will be the one looking at it, that will come up with, what is the issue exactly? The pros and cons of hiring an outside expert that understands that issue, that it, that this plan would define who we're going to be working with, Columbia residents, the village boards, the delegation. Had another one here, oh, the CA board, sorry about that. CA board, CA staff, and maybe there's somebody else we should be working with, obviously the consultant. But be working with these people to come up with, here's the issue, it's well defined now, we understand what is the problem, and we come up with potential solutions. And then we present, then this plan would also have how you roll this out in terms of getting public input in plenty of time. And that would be, the plan would be developed as just a plan, it's how you're going to go about doing it. But then in May, you'll have another board possibly, or whatever, you'll, the new board will start. So that board would be responsible then for beginning, with the staff, beginning the implementation of that plan, which would involve how you roll it out, how, you know, explore it, how you have the options, et cetera. But it basically would be a process that then would take a couple of months, with the understanding that if, at the end, legislation is required, there'd be plenty of time, because part of the players here that you'd be meeting with would be the delegation. There'd be plenty of time to prefile, which would then also result in a hearing here in Howard County. And in other words, it would be a good process that would involve everybody, but you'd have all the issues, is basically what I'm trying to say, in a very wordy way. I apologize.
Excuse me, can I get in here somewhere?
Uh, yes.
You accept my friendly amendment? Okay. Good, because you don't want me to repeat it. Thank you.
I was trying to make this thing short and sweet, but no, that's...
Yeah. All right, if somebody there wants to shorten it, go ahead. Cynthia, you shorten and send it back to us. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, but, I mean, the justice development plan.
Yes, in April.
By April. We'll, Janet will go back through the minutes and figure out exactly what special word is.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Who is that?
My name is Joel Broida. Came to Columbia in 1970, and a resident ever since. Was out of the country one year on assignment. That's about me. When you want to develop a plan, you have a plan to do something. What is the problem you're trying to solve? Is there a problem? Is it the lien? Is it the court case? To turn everything upside down, you have, you function under an HOA, and now you're going to come up with an octopus, nobody knows what it is, called CBA. Doesn't make sense to me, okay?
What I was trying to say is, we will look at, what is the real issue? And is there an impact?
Well, that's the point. You said you'd develop a plan. A plan to do what?
A plan, how we're going to go about looking at this issue.
That's broken.
The point, the first part would be answering that question.
Well, that's the most important, and I think that's what you need the committees to look at first.
Then the other part would be to consider hiring an outside expert in this field of liens, et cetera, that would also advise and come up with, is there a problem? If there is, or there isn't, or if there is, what are some possible solutions? You deal with that first. But what I was trying to emphasize is that the players or the partners as part of this plan would be the organizations or the Columbia residents, the village boards, the delegation, the CA board, the CA staff, et cetera, and others, that should be part of developing this.
This morning, I learned about the bankruptcy case. Apparently, that's the secret that no one wanted to talk about, last night or last week or whenever. The secret's out of the bag. Now, what does that do to the rest of us, the community? What does that do to the residents, the homeowners?
Right, those are the questions. That's what we would be working on, those are the questions.
Don't do a plan until you find out what's wrong, in some depth.
Joel, I think that's what I was saying, that that...
Everybody here thinks...
If that wasn't clear enough, I'm sorry, but that would be it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with what you're saying.
Greg signed his hand up, so.
No, no, thank you, Joel. Thank you very much for coming in.
This is Alan. I'd like to get in the queue, and I know Nancy wanted to get in before me.
Oh, okay. Look, I'm going to try to maintain my civility here, because that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm going to try to maintain my civility here, because that's what I'm supposed to do. All right? But I'll tell you, I'm not happy at all at any aspect of the way this happened. One thing I'm going to try to do in the next, I don't know how long, is to hold the right people accountable. For all of you out there, for all the smiles and the, oh, we're working with you, ask your representative what his or her position was at the first secret meeting back last October, at the second secret meeting back in November, at the third secret meeting in February, at the fourth one more recently. Ask them, what were you thinking? Okay? Why didn't you stop the crazy train that got us here? It's about accountability, folks. We did a horrible job, but ask your representative, what, why, what were you, why did you not see? You know, we got kicked in the teeth once. Cindy, I don't know if you were around when that happened six years ago, and I, you know, we're telling them, you know, what on earth are we doing, folks? We already went through this insanity once, and we did it all again, even worse this time.
And it cost money, too.
It cost a lot of money. Outside counsel was involved in this, okay? We had a lot of executives involved in this, not to mention all of your valuable time, okay? And then, yes, yes, our valuable time, too, okay? For what? What? Yeah, you know, this proposal, we talk out of both sides of our mouth. We say, we need to do this legislation because CA is so unique. We find out, no, it's, there's a lot of other HOAs that aren't so different. And then we'd even tell the villages, to get them into this, that, okay, we're unique right now, we need to do this this year for CA, but we'll get you in next year, right? Apparently, we're not so unique. Okay? We tell them, we tell everybody, we're doing this because we need to spend, we need to save money on, and time, because of all the legislative proposals every year that impact the HOA Act, that we don't want to impact us. But then we bring in 20 sections of the HOA Act that are going to be applicable to us, that we're still going to have to fight. I mean, it's just, it's both sides of our mouth, folks. Ask your representative what on earth he or she was thinking.
We can't ask them. Here's the thing.
Yes, you can, and just...
They basically have said, you can't speak.
Then, yeah, well, just...
That's what I'm telling you.
Well, just ask them, did you vote for the closed meeting? They can at least say how they voted for the closed meetings, okay? You know, you're also told that there's some kind of confidentiality urgency, some kind of imperative. My village manager's telling me, Greg, we were told, not my village manager, my village chair, telling me, Greg, we were told it was imperative we do this last night. Then today, oh, well, we're just going to put this on hold. It's okay. Come on. You have to demand more accountability out of us. Please do that. Thank you. Nancy's next. I'm sorry. Nancy's next, and then Alan. Nancy? And then, I want to go through the people that already signed up. Nancy?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, in response to what I can hear, I certainly heard Greg, and I'm glad that the audience enjoyed what he said. But we are members of the CA board, obviously. We are elected members from our community. But at the same time, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the corporation that is called Columbia Association. And when we understand that there could be a large fiscal change in our position because of something that happened in the courts, and that we are told that we don't want to alarm certain people about this, and I'm not talking about alarming the community, I'm talking about alarming lobbyists who could very well be out there fighting on behalf of the lenders, for example, we need to be very careful about how we go about this. And therefore, it did need to be done in private. I'm sure that the people sitting in the audience and the rest of the community don't want everyone in the community to know if they're having financial difficulties or even have the potential for financial difficulties. So I'm sure they can appreciate, maybe looking at it that way, that perhaps there are situations where things do need to be kept private, where they could very well be urgent, and they might need to be acted upon more quickly. I personally did not like keeping a secret. There was also a lot of potential for this so-called secret to no longer be a secret and to make the legislation moot, as it has become moot. So I certainly appreciate that, and I, you know, I like and I respect Greg a great deal, and I certainly don't mean to speak against him, but I do need to speak on behalf of CA, where I think that, yes, CA blew it. Last night's meeting was, in my opinion, horrendous, for people on both sides, to quote someone that we all love and sadly know. But I will say that it is our job to protect and defend CA, not at any cost, that is not my role, but when we think that there is something that is going to damage CA, we need to do our job to protect them. And at the same time, we are protecting the community, because if there's a financial loss to CA, potentially, there is then, therefore, an effect on the community, and they have every right to know about it. So I'm so glad that this was out in the open, but...
Thank you, Nancy. Alan's next, and then Renee and Dick, and then Alan.
Okay. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay. First of all, I can't match his passion, but I'll echo everything that Greg said, as, as I don't remember, maybe the one person who voted against each of those secret meetings happening in the first place. Until February, this was a legislative matter, not a legal matter, and those meetings should not have been closed. And so that started us down this path and just got compounded, secret after secret. The fiduciary responsibility that Nancy talks about, I absolutely agree with. The fiduciary responsibility doesn't just mean money, it's about loyalty to the corporation and its purposes. And if our purpose is to enhance life in Columbia and to speak for Columbia's values, we did a poor job of it, and we need to do a whole lot better. I'm not exactly sure where we are with motion, but I guess, from what I could hear, I'm not convinced. I'd like to hear more discussion about whether or not it makes sense for this board to try to decide what the plan is. I get, and agree with Ginny's wish that this gets started as soon as possible, but I don't know that I want to decide for the next board, which of course, could be all the same people. But I'm not sure I want to decide for the next board what their procedure is going to be. And so I would like to see, and I would like to see a more broad motion, more like Dick's, that we agree to create a complete and excellent public process to get both information to the public and information from the public, so we can truly decide what the issues are we want to approach and what the best approach is, legislative or otherwise, to get there.
Could I clarify that? I agree with what you're saying, Alan. The point was to get things moving right away. Staff present a draft, I use the word draft, to this board, but it wouldn't be finalized here, because there'll be a new board starting in May. But rather than wait for that, we've heard a lot of comments, let's at least put some of that into a draft plan that this board can look at, and then the next board would, obviously, they can change it, or they can refine it, or they can begin implementation. I just didn't want to lose the next 40 days. That was the whole idea. So I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, I agree with you there. And finally, the last thing I'd want to say is, and it's not speaking directly to this motion, but I'm still holding open the possibility that this term, that there might be a possibility for doing a direct amendment to the Homeowners Association Act to close the loophole that the Stein case was pushed through. So I don't know if that's possible or not. That's it for me.
Renee, we'll finally give you a chance, sorry.
That's okay. I'm new to the board. I've only been here a couple of months, and I would just like to say one thing. Thank you all for showing up. Okay? Thank you for participating. That is what makes Columbia work. So give yourselves a hand. You did the right thing.
We're still getting some feedback.
Okay, as you can see, the board was very skeptical of this process. I think it might be a good, I, excuse me?
Wait, 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 let Dick finish, let Dick finish.
I would, the reason this thing took as long as it did is because we had a lot of questions about it. The reason the meetings were closed is because the only way we could get the information was by closing the meeting. And I'm going to suggest that maybe we should release the minutes from those meetings so you can see just what the process was.
Okay. We're still having some feedback on the phones. So, you know, please recheck your mute buttons.
The point that I would like to make, and notwithstanding Greg's passion, is that, as I was trying to say last evening, we started this process. It was a process that I approached the board about along with other staff. We started it last fall with a timeline at that time to go, to take something to, for legislation in 2020. Another matter, external factor came into play. I'm the president and CEO of the Columbia Association. As I've tried to say to the board in the last evening, Columbia Association was a Maryland, private Maryland non-stock corporation going back to 1965, many years before the homeowners' association. I believe, as the president and CEO, I have a responsibility to look out for what could harm the corporation. Our annual charge, and if you look at our budget for FY '20, we're estimating $40 million in annual charge. This case, this matter, has put an impact on that. That bothers me, because I don't, we fully don't know the impact of it. So that's why I went to the board with a sense of urgency. We need to move and see what opportunities we can have to get ahead of this. Because we're $82 million organization, including what we borrow. As I said, $40 million of that comes from the annual charge. Right now, that number, it can be impacted. And we will find out what the impact of it is. But it will change, it could change how we do business, how we have an opportunity to provide the services and benefits to this community. And that was my look at it when I approached the board about this. It was a fiduciary responsibility as a president and CEO of this organization. And I felt if I had not done that, I would have been remiss in doing my job. May I respond? The only reason, I said last evening, it was not my desire, but we had... We were dealing with, we have our own lobbyists. But everyone knows the banking lobbyists out there are huge. I didn't want to put on the front and center what we were trying to do. That was one of the reasons why I wanted to try to pursue, with no guarantees was given to us, that we would go forward with 2019 legislation. But there is a possibility, and I wanted to pursue that possibility, because we could have gotten ahead of it. Whatever we do going forward, we're going to still have to deal with those lobbyists.
But the problem, but the problem really was, was as you were keeping it away from the banking community, you were also keeping it away from the Columbia residents.
I acknowledge that fully.
And that was where this fell apart. Because you started this process back in October, you say? And you had a bunch of closed sessions. The very first open session on this was last night. And what people were told was, well, you heard it last night, we're going to vote on it tomorrow. And how do you think people would react to something like that? So, now, here's the other thing. The problem with closed sessions is that people feel left out. And the grounds for a closed session are very liberal here. An attorney walks in the room, it's a closed session, practically. And what you're talking about was legislation, for the most part. Legislation, crafting legislation should not be a closed session topic. This is because that affects a lot of people in this community. Now, if you've got a court case you want to talk about in private, perhaps you could close it for that purpose. But you're crafting legislation. And when you're crafting legislation, you can't be closing a meeting just for that, just because you're talking to an attorney from your staff.
Thank you, Alex.
Great. Thanks, Alex, for coming in. I disagree with that.
Who just spoke?
This is Greg. Alan, this is Greg.
Who just spoke before that?
That was Alex Hakimian.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Alex Hakimian, former CA Board member from Oakland Mills.
Thank you.
Still from Oakland Mills. Okay, a couple responses. I have always preferred, and still believe, that we can address the Stein problem without opening this awful box of transforming ourselves from an HOA into something else, okay? That was my very strong preference. So I disagree with some type of a plan if the plan involves this whole mess of transforming ourselves and addressing Stein at the same time. Now that the cat is out of the bag, whatever you want to say, there's no reason to bury the first lien priority problem in a larger piece of legislation that is going to draw this kind of people. Might be a lot of the same, might be a different group. But there's a lot of people that are perfectly fine with Columbia Association being a homeowners' association. It's been that way for a lot of years. It's worked fine. We all know how it works. Our village managers know how it works. Our residents know, you know, if they've ever gotten into it, they know how it works. So I would just, again, ask if there's going to be a plan that'd be limited to solving the Stein problem with a whole lot of public input, letting them know what we're doing and why we're doing it. I think the public is intelligent enough to understand that. That's number one. Number two, I, Milton, I understand that it's impossible to put an exact dollar figure on the potential harm. But the fact is, we've never even gotten an estimate. And when we are asked to make a decision like this, and we're told that there's all kinds of doom and gloom, I, for one, and I've said this in other places, would need some type of attempt to quantify that. Make all kinds of assumptions, whatever you can. I mean, that's the way people do this every day. And we've got a lot of smart people on our staff that could quantify that for us. You know, as I've said, the Stein decision is... Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. The Stein decision, I mean, anybody, lawyers, that is unpublished opinion. Very questionable precedential value. But assuming, let's say, it is, it would be precedential. We still don't have any quantification. Columbia is a $74 million organization. You know, if we were a $74,000 organization, might be a different... Maybe, you know, all of a sudden, little things like that could mean something. But, you know, for me, I can't say, based on what I've seen, that the potential harm is significant to CA. I can't. Because I haven't seen any estimate. But it's potentially significant. It's potentially very significant. But I can't say that it is significant, because it's, again, we haven't attempted to do that work. So again, I disagree with Ginny, with your motion, with respect. But only because I really think the problem, the urgency, the exigency here was this bankruptcy decision that's out of the bag. Let's focus on solving that problem efficiently, effectively, quickly. And then if there's still any desire to get into this business of taking us out of the HOA Act into some other place, then fine, let's do it then.
Sure.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting what you've said about that. And I also, I really appreciate all the people who have come out as individuals tonight. And it speaks to the passion and the principles that people carry in this community. I came here from my village board meeting. And we were the only village that didn't have an opportunity, really, to discuss and speak about this. And I didn't feel that I could sit down here and do anything about decision-making if I hadn't, you know, talked to the people in my village. And so it's very, very important, a part of this process, that we acknowledge the effects that whatever this might have is not just Columbia Association, but it's the villages. And this was brought up tonight. That we have to think in some broader terms strategically about what the effects are, not only this year, right now, but going out to the future. And we're supposed to be involved now in a strategic planning process. So we have to take this into account. This has to be some part of our strategic planning so that we're seeing what the implications are in a broader way. I know that sometimes we get very, very narrow and detailed. And we look at line by line. And certainly with a budget, you have to do that. But sometimes you also have to look to the larger community, 100,000 people. We have a lot of stakeholders here. And we are responsible for that, to look at the larger picture.
And then, Lynn, okay. Got to be quick. Yeah, that's right, I got to remember. Janet's not here, keep me on track.
Yeah, I was going to begin from one of these four points. One, what Ginny is talking about, you may remember a term, a study. To study the problem, the Maryland General sent me, they have a task force, they assign a commission to look at an issue and bring back recommendations and proposals. I think that's what you need to do in this case. I guess I'm curious about, you mentioned that back in October, this became an issue for discussion. What prompted that prior to the law case in January? So something must have happened that no one has thought about that occurred in October. That's a big part of the study. I have another condo, I have a condo here in Runyon, Minneapolis, Minnesota. In both cases, we asked at our board meetings, how much money is in arrears at the present time? Who hasn't paid their condo fees? I don't know if I've ever seen any information from CA about how much is outstanding. So a question might be, you know, what has it been on an annual basis? Very much the first, you know, what might be the financial impact? How about you look back over the last five years and look at how many cases you've had where you have collected money on a lien? If this law had been in effect and you had not been a priority recipient, what would that financial impact have been? Thank you.
Okay. Lynn, and then we're going to have to wrap it up here, because we said... Lynn?
We have had the opportunity to talk to lots of people.
Lynn, Lynn, you got to talk into the mic.
We have had the ability to talk to lots of people in this process. And obviously, would like, would like...
Yeah, they're anchored to the table.
We can't move them. All I can do is sit on the table, I guess.
I don't lean forward.
Yeah.
No, I was so soft-spoken, sorry. Anyway. Anyway, I don't necessarily see this as a problem. It could really be an opportunity for the community. Columbia began as a community association. That's how we were defined when we started. And we loved being a community association. It set us apart. We were able to do things that other people never thought of in a community association, before and after daycare. What homeowners' association could do that? But then, of course, homeowners' associations didn't exist then. But we have the, you know, we liked being a community association. We represented everybody. We represented the renters, we represented the businesses, we represented the property owners, we represented the people who work here. We have the opportunity to look at this again. We are more than a homeowners' association. You know, by definition, and I think by actions, this is something the community now has an opportunity to look at. I see it as an opportunity for the community to really understand who we are, what we are. So I can see this as, hopefully, a very positive thing going forward. And I would hope that, you know, again, this will be a topic of conversation for the next couple of months.
All right. I like the call for the vote, okay? It's going to be really tough.
I don't think they had a chance to speak at President's Speak Out.
Okay.
I might want to revise my motion.
Good evening. My name is Jack Canalski. I'm living in Oakland Mills since 2003. Thank you. I would like to ask the board to put the motion forward to first, promise us to be more transparent. Second, describe the problem that exists that we are not aware of. Third, find, propose a solution. Have a discussion with the community, since Columbia Association is designed to serve the community, not the corporate world. Provide us with what's going to be the benefits and what's going to be the drawbacks of this solution that you are proposing. And possibly, maybe there should be a community vote, not just the board member vote. Thank you.
I think, one last one, and then...
I'm Ernie Martigan from Hickory Ridge. Earlier, I heard a proposal to develop a plan which will involve the community at large, the villages, outside counsel. It seems to me that a plan of that scope implies that at the end of the process, we will create and submit a bill. And I, well, I believe that's what will be the foregone conclusion. You aren't going to invest that amount of time and money and that many people and then say, well, we can't agree. I think there should be a shortcut way, I don't know what it would be, to decide if you're going to put together a detailed bill. There's a lot of opposition to making this change. And I don't want to see us undertake a mammoth project of that size, because you aren't going, the money will be sunk, the time will be sunk. And you're going to say, how can we walk away from this, having done all this work? We have to come out with a bill.
Okay, Ginny, your...
Yeah, just to clarify, the gentleman before, and Mr. Stensler, hit on a lot of the things that I was trying to say. You develop, what I want to see is something in writing that shows the community the process that the CA Board and staff will be using to, one, identify what is the problem and what are some possible solutions? Who will be involved in this process? And we're already saying CA staff, CA Board, the residents of Columbia, the village boards, and the delegation as just some examples. We may find, when you do this draft, that there are some other key players that should be partners and be involved and have input. Like, you guys had phenomenal ideas tonight, okay? They've been written down, we're going to be looking at that. And then you come up with, is there really a problem? And what is the problem? And you saw how we go about identifying, is there a problem? How serious is the problem? What are the ramifications? And then you get to solutions. You're saying we're going to have solutions first. No, that's not how you approach this. So I don't know of any, quite honestly, I don't know of any other way of approaching it. My point is, we should be doing that by April so that you at least see what a general plan looks like and what changes it might need. It's a rough draft. And then in May, after you get it to the new board, they will refine it, and then you'll start looking at it. Otherwise, you just sit around talking, and if it's a serious problem, we're not addressing it. So you've got to look at it and do something, guys. That's all I'm saying.
All right, this is what Ginny had said, so I'm going to call the vote on that motion that...
I'm going to withdraw my motion. I think we've got a lot of good input tonight. I think this is obviously a much more involved question, that we have questions on top of questions. I think Greg has made a good point, that maybe there's a Plan B here that's better. So I'm going to move that we put this on the agenda for our next work session and give this the kind of consideration that it really deserves.
I'll second that.
Well, he's withdrawing.
So my friendly amendment, that was... So my friendly amendment, that was... I, I'd still like to pursue then, um, what I was talking about so we can get things going because we keep delaying. There's still the issue of people not believing that we're really going to work on this with them being involved. So I'd like to still move for what I have been suggesting.
All right, Sherry.
Well, there's nothing to prevent staff from doing that.
There, there are two things here, and, and if we can separate them out, one is the problem, and, and clearly, that's what people want to have defined, what is the problem? The second thing is the process to be used for discussion and for coming up with options if we find that the problem is significant in a particular way. I don't think we can move to options until we know what the problem is. I also agree with you, Ginny, that we should not lose time on this. If, if we walk away from this now, then we will lose the ideas and the passion of, that the community has brought to this. The villages are also, all of the villages have been discussing this. Let's use all of the good ideas that we can tap into.
Do you want, do you want to second it?
Yeah, I would like, I would like, I would like to come up with a way of discussing the problem. Let's go back to the beginning and see what is the problem.
Okay.
I, I move that we discuss this at the very next meeting.
The next meeting?
Is that satisfied?
Couple of weeks.
Yes.
Okay, Ginny, I, I've moved that we discuss this at the very next meeting and, and give this some more thought. Can, can you...
As long as we get this moving, because everybody's already discussing it, and I don't see that we have a, an idea of how to approach it.
That would be something we discussed.
All right, as long as it doesn't go beyond that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it will have to go beyond.
Well, I mean, discussion.
Let's, let's develop the plan at the next meeting.
All right, so various motions here. Um, okay, so basically...
Well, there's only one motion on the floor, correct?
Alan? Alan?
There's only one motion on the floor, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, Ginny, uh, Ginny and Sherry made a motion.
I thought Dick made a motion and Greg seconded it.
No, Dick withdrew his motion.
I withdrew my motion.
And then he made another motion.
But Sherry hit.
Which, which Greg, uh, seconded. And that is that we make this a discussion item on the next agenda, the next work session, next work session.
The next work session, that would be...
Why don't you just take a court...
Is that the motion on the floor currently?
Ginny, did you?
But I hear the motion that is currently on the floor.
We're still working that, um...
I, I think what Dick is doing is trying to amend my, uh, our motion.
No, Dick made a separate individual motion, having withdrawn his, and your motion was a friendly amendment to his.
No, 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 no.
His was a part of his, and his withdrew.
Jenny made a separate motion, which Sherry seconded.
She couldn't make a separate motion, it was a motion on the floor.
Alan, yes.
Dick had withdrawn his original emotion of an hour or two ago. He, he just withdrew that, um, before. I made a motion, Sherry seconded that motion to, to just get this process started and, and...
By discussing what is the problem.
Right, all right. So my, my hearing of the motion that is actually on the floor right now is that Ginny and Sherry had moved that we focus on the problem and put this on the February fourteenth work session.
Yes.
Right? That is the motion I hear. March of fourteenth, sorry. March fourteenth, that's the motion I hear.
Yeah.
Ginny made it, Sherry seconded it. I'm waiting for Janet to make sure she has this.
Is Janet, oh.
So what I understand, and I'm having a little difficulty here because, is that Ginny moved that we focus on the problem and put this issue on the agenda for the March fourteenth work session. And that motion was seconded by Sherry Zaret.
Right, all right. I am going to call the question. All those in favor of that motion? Alan?
Aye.
Janet says aye. Nancy? Opposed? Abstained?
I'm here, but I am afraid I didn't hear the motion very clearly.
Talk about it at the next work session.
That's fine, uh, yes.
Okay, she's going to vote yes. Alan, what about, I didn't hear any... Alan?
I voted aye.
Okay, sorry. All right, unanimous. All right, that really finishes up, that's all we had on the agenda. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, one of the things we've been trying to do lately is stick to our time periods, so... But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
What should be expected here from the board after a month?
Well, I'm not sure. March fourteenth work session. And Alan, Janet, Nancy, thank you very much for calling in, we appreciate it. And for the rest of the board, thank you.